So I'm trying to start my video over but can. Um, when I, when I click my video, I can't hear anything. It's just a big echo. Can you all hear me? I can hear you a little bit, but it's very echoey and I hear the same thing. Five times, so I don't know if I need to log off and try again.
Hope, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now, Nancy.
Okay, I think we've got it figured out.
Okay, thank you.
And hope you can hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
You can hear us. As long as we're recording.
I was saying we'll record.
You have to take the mute off zoom and mute the room. So, gotcha.
Think we are all used to getting back to in-person meetings and trying to figure out zoom again is always a good time. Are we ready to get started, Nancy?
We are.
All right, well, I'd like to call to order. The planning zoning meeting for December 5th, 2023. Um, with that, I will ask for an approval. Actually, I'm sorry, we have to call to order and take a roll, please.
Ms. Sweringer?
Present.
Mr. Martinez?
Present.
Ms. Hubka?
Present.
Mr. Adams?
Here.
Uh, Kate Fuller is absent. Camille Keys is absent. Uh, Ms. Austin?
Here.
And Chair Haggerty?
Presence. I think we are still getting echo. Hope, can you hear? Is everything okay though?
I can hear everything. Okay, can I unmute while you all are talking or will that mess things up?
Oh, it's best if you stayed muted. Perfect, until you want to talk, sorry.
Okay, well, with that, we have a quorum. Thank you, and we'll go ahead and to the approval of meeting minutes. From the September 19th, 2023 meeting, that's been a minute.
Move approval.
I have a second.
Uh, approval from Martinez and a second from this hubca. Now, can we get a vote?
Ms. Sweringer?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez?
Hi.
Ms. Hubka?
I.
Mr. Adams?
Hi.
Ms. Austin?
I.
And Chair Haggerty?
Abstain.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, now we can move on to public forum. Uh, this public forum is an opportunity to address anything not on the agenda tonight, so we're not talking about the rest of the meeting. So if there's anybody that's on. Uh, in the public or online to talk about any other topics, it doesn't look like it.
There's no one online.
All right. Then we can move to the public hearing. So thank you all for coming this evening for, for the public hearing. Um, we will go ahead and call case number zone Z O N 2023 dash O O two regarding the uh, 2400 West Union Avenue Waste Management P U D. Amendments um, has come before the planning zoning commission. Uh, so we will. Open the public hearing. Uh, we'll give staff presentation. We'll have applicant give a presentation. We'll do public testimony, uh, limited to three minutes. Have a final statement from the applicant and staff if needed. We'll close the public meeting. Uh, we'll have discussion here internally and then we will vote on the proceedings for this evening. So with that, I'd like to call for a motion to open the public meeting.
Make a motion to open the public meeting.
Second. And if we could call for a vote that was uh, called by the subca and seconded by Mr. Martinez.
Ms. Sweringer?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez?
Hi.
Ms. Hubka?
Hi.
Mr. Adams?
Hi.
Ms. Austin?
I.
And Chair Haggerty?
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, spell, yeah.
There we go. There we go. I do. My name is Brooke Bell. I'm a senior planner with the community development department. Um, good evening, Chair Haggerty and commissioners. Uh, tonight we're here for a public hearing. Um, on the uh, waste management on a waste management P U D amendment at 2400 West Union Avenue. Uh, the case number on this is Z O N 2023. Uh, dash zero zero two. Uh, so this is uh, the, the first public hearing. There will be uh, another public hearing in front of city council on, on this same uh, project. Uh, so with that, I want to get everyone oriented uh, to the site here. Um, and uh, the area in purple is um, is the overall uh, property that we're talking about tonight. Um, just to orient you, we've got the uh, I've got my little red pointer here, but uh, this is, this property is south of West Union Avenue. It is to the west of the South Flat River and, and Mary Carter Greenway uh, trail. Uh, Santa Fe is not shown on this, but Santa Fe is farther east uh, or 285. Um, or I should say 85. And then um, this line represents the border between the city of Littleton and city of Inglewood. Uh, to the south. And then also to the south, there's a multifamily residential property uh, directly to the south. Kind of three-story walk-up apartments. And then to the north of Union Avenue is Centennial Park. Uh, it's got ball fields and. Uh, a, a little pond, lake, whatever you want to call it, and that is the city of Inglewood Park. Um, within the site. The um, most of the eastern portion of the site is uh, existing waste management property. And most of the western portion of the site uh, is owned by the uh, by, by the Canfield family. And actually, uh, this western portion of the site. Slightly comes into the existing waste management uh, property. So we're going to be talking about the entire site. Uh, and uh, and actually, most of the site. Starting to get a little echo, but most of the site was zoned as a planned development back in uh, 1992. And uh, the zoning code was a little bit different in 1992 in that. A, a, a waste transfer station, uh, although it wasn't specifically listed, was likely a use by right back in nine, 1992. However. Any industrial property over an acre back then. Um, had to go through a planned development process, which was a precursor to our current planned unit development process. Um, so uh, most of the, the, the site that was the waste management property and a small portion of the Canfield property. Um, was zoned uh, planned development in 1992. Um, currently, this portion of the site, the Canfield property and my pointer's not working. Oh, there we go. Um, this portion of the site is, is just so and I want. Uh, but what we're going, what's, what's proposed tonight is to do the entire property as a P U D amendment, which covers. Um, uh, what, what zoning entitlements need to happen to be able to do this project. Um, uh, currently, a waste ma- a, a waste transfer station is actually a conditional use under the current code. Um, but doing this as a P U D or P U D amendment would sort of trump that. And we're doing that. It's actually a more streamlined process and allows a little bit more flexibility uh, in, in terms of. Um, the city as well as, as the applicant. Um, I, I did need to mention it's a total, uh, the whole purple area of uh, about 21 and a half acres. So that's just kind of to orient you in this particular slide, north is up. Um. So I mentioned um, the, the main, the main purpose of this P U D amendment, um, because the use has been there since the nineties and before, actually. Um, is that uh, last summer in June of 2022, the existing uh, transfer station building, which you can still see in this aerial. Actually, uh, had a fire and burned down and it was demolished. So right now, that, that building no longer exists. Uh, they're operating in kind of an open air fashion, which is not the best. Way to do it. Um, what's being proposed is to replace that existing building with a new fully enclosed transfer station building. Um, and uh, and to take other precautions to try and cut down on noise litter that blows. Uh, and so that's really the, the bulk of the P U D. Um, the, the new building uh, will be larger than the old building was. Uh, but uh, and of course, our, our applicant will be making a presentation as well. Uh, but they're not looking necessarily at more volume or more traffic. It's just a more efficient operation. Um, and, and all of this is more detailed in the staff report. Um, and that's why, as I mentioned, the previous transfer station was about half the size as the new proposed transfer station. Uh, but again, there is not a, a, a proposed increase in, in traffic or, or volume of, of waste. And it's a combination recycling and. Um, and, and I think uh, waste management can talk a little bit more about how their operations work. But a transfer station is essentially the garbage trucks come in, they dump it uh, in a big pile and then. Uh, huge front end loaders load those into semis that take them to the landfill. Um, I don't know exactly how the recycling operation works, but uh, that's a, a, a little bit different. Um, last thing I want to say on this slide is we had a neighborhood meeting uh, mid-June. Um, and there was uh, there was really not perceptible uh, opposition to, to the proposed P U D amendment. Um, so this, this slide um, is, is turned a little bit differently on the, on the image to the left, north is actually to the left. So, so the Platte River would, would be on the upper side of this graphic. Um, and what this shows in Union would be on the left side of this graphic. So north is to the left, south is to the right. And this shows the new uh, waste transfer station building that's enclosed. Um, and, and shows really the entire property and that incorporates some of the new uh, Canfield property uh, to the west. The graphic to the right is just an enlargement uh, that shows uh, some of the traffic movements uh, coming in and out of the site. And, and really the, the, the in and out of the site still comes off of. Um. Off of, off of this street and uh, and, and comes in to the uh, west of, of the existing office building. This is a, uh, an office building for waste ma- management. And so the, the in and out movements still come in uh, to the waste transfer station and they're, they're shown. Uh, as coming in this way and, and then leaving and coming back out uh, towards West Union Avenue. Uh, there's also one other uh, smaller portion of the project is there's a future office, small office building that is proposed uh, just to the west of the. Uh, new waste transfer station. Um, so as I mentioned, the, 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 the new wage transfer building will be fully enclosed, uh, hoping to reduce the amount of blowing litter and, and the no- noise that um. I was out there and the backup beepers are, are kind of noisy. And so those being in a building, uh, well, I think help, help that out. Um, there's also um, uh, you can see it here, but there's a lot of parking on the site. Uh, not only for employees, but also for the, the garbage trucks. Uh, but previously, the, the parking for employees was encroaching on City Rightofway. Um, on West Union Avenue. Uh, our Public Works Department asks that, that all be reconfigured to um. To remove that right-of-way encroachment of the parking, uh, and also to provide um, additional space for, for landscaping along. Uh, uh, along West Union Avenue. Uh, we want to screen that as, as, as much as we can along West Union. Uh, and so I'll, 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 uh, I'll show you a landscape plan in a moment here. But there's the new parking lot, uh, includes interior parking lot islands. And then there is a uh, a, a litter fence. And I, and I'll, I'll show you in another slide, but in, in 2021, um, waste management approached the city and wanted to actually do a 20-foot-high litter fence. Um, which you'll see, um, I, I believe a slide of in uh, the applicant's presentation. Uh, but it's a, a 20-foot-high. Uh, more transparent sort of netting type fence that helps keep any blowing litter uh, out of, on the property instead of uh, you know, on the South Flat River property. Um, they had to get a variance for that because even though the city zoning codes allow for 12-foot. Uh, high fence in industrial areas, they don't allow for 20 feet. So they applied for that uh, on their own in, in, in 2021 and that variance was granted. That uh, fence is going to be extended westward uh, to include some of the new Canfield property to further protect. Um, some of that residential to the south. Uh, in addition to that. Um, they are, um, we, we had a meeting with the city of Littleton. Uh, and uh, waste management and community development staff uh, to discuss doing a, a, a solid or opaque wood fence. Or extending a wood fence along the south property line adjacent to that uh, residential. Uh, to the south. In terms of parking. Um, uh, even, even with the reconfigured parking that, that lot that took it out of the um, city right-of-way. Uh, the P U D proposes 244 parking spaces, which is 86 over the required amount. Now, there is not a, in our zoning code, there is not a specific. Parking ratio for waste transfer stations. Um, but they've, they've got a lot of years of uh, this op- operating and really. Sort of the highest uh, parking demand is really employees that drive those uh, trash trucks. And so it, it, it seems like they've got an adequate amount of parking. Um, I mentioned that uh, and, and there is a way to figure out the parking for a warehouse use, which that's, would be 86 under what they're currently proposing. Uh, and an office use. Um, I mentioned that uh, in the traffic uh, memo and, and traffic counts. Um, they are proposing uh, matching the previous uh, trip generation of the old facility and not uh, increasing uh, the daily trips. Uh, I talked a little bit about landscaping and screening. This, again, the graphic to the left is uh, has, shows the Platte River. On top and then to the left, West Union Avenue, you can see a pretty heavy. Uh, amount of plantings in, in the right-of-way area and you can see how the parking lot is no longer encroaching. And then to the, uh, the graphic to the right. Um, she is an enlarged uh, view of the waste transfer station. Um, and currently, uh, there is uh, to the west of sort of the whole waste transfer area. Um, a, a, a lot of the screen fencing is six feet tall with privacy slats. Uh, but as you get farther south towards this corner, uh, that's where they s- um, and, 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 and somewhat north of there. Um, that's where they started the uh, litter fence. It's 20 feet high. And then that litter fence currently continues down to uh, where I'm pointing here, uh, the edge of the current property. And they're proposing extending that 20-foot litter fence along the newer portion of the Canfield property as well as adding that uh, 10-foot opaque uh, wood fence. So um, just to kind of summarize, uh, from a staff perspective, uh, we found that um, the, the, the proposed application was consistent with the Inglewood Forward Comprehensive Plan. Uh, and in the staff uh, report, it uh, discusses uh, meeting some of the objectives of the work and learn goals. Most of those are environmental. And then um. Uh, it, we also found that under the I-1 Zone District that would require a condition- I- one zone district that would require a conditional use permit, although that is going to be superseded by this P U D amendment. Um, our our current zoning code would not necessarily require a fully enclosed building nor a twenty-foot-high uh litter or debris fence. Um, and then uh finally, that the rezoned property will not uh have a significant negative impact on surrounding properties or general uh health, safety and welfare of of the community. Um, we feel like this is a a positive step step with this in fully enclosed building. Uh, as such that the uh development, oh, well, I guess lastly, this was run through the Development Review Team, which includes building, fire, um uh wastewater treatment plant, utilities, public works, traffic. Um, so it was vetted and uh at at least at this point, they will still have to get a building permit and follow all those procedures. But at least from what they've shown thus far, uh it meets um the Inglewood Municipal Code regulations. Uh, so based on that, um, city staff recommends approval uh of the P U D amendment with one condition. And that is, um, the Canfield property currently has uh two properties within it that just are slightly off in their legal descriptions. Um, and uh and and we can't have a also a property line run through the middle of the new building. Uh, so if this is approved as part of uh the building permit application and approval, uh they will have to do a uh minor subdivision that combines those two Canfield properties. Um, so with that, uh I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Bell. Uh, can we do questions this hour? Do we have to go into the next? Okay. Uh, go ahead, Mr. Martines. Um, was the uh the twenty-foot fence, was that presented at the public meeting and was there any feedback from the public about?
From the neighborhood meeting?
Yep.
Um. It was in June. Um. I think it was. I I think the plan was always to to extend the twenty-foot litter debris fence westward uh to that residential property to the south. I I did want to mention something else as well as, um, we did refer this out uh to South Suburban Parks and Recreation, as well as to the City of Sheridan and to the City of Littleton. Um, and uh the City of Sheridan and and uh South Suburban Parks and Recreation did not have any comments. They had a couple of questions on on fencing. Um, and uh but City of Littleton did ask about um, the property to the south with the residential, hence our meeting with them uh last week. And I have a follow-up email from them and I've replied to it saying, yes, there's going to be opaque solid wood fencing there on the on the south side, in addition to the twenty-foot uh litter fence.
The litter fence, that's transparent sort of netting kind of?
Yeah, um, I know that the applicant has a better uh graphic of that than it than what's in uh the drawings that are in your, well, that would have been in your packet as well, that PowerPoint. Um, I I could go to it now if you'd like.
Regarding the fence?
Yeah.
Just whatever you've got.
Oh.
Well, that's why should we have the applicant give their presentation as well here? And then we can ask questions. Uh, well, then we can have public comments and then we can ask questions, I think would be.
Well, should we ask questions of?
Any other questions for me?
Review?
Certainly.
I did have another question. Okay, go ahead. Just about um any addition, any additional impervious service on the on the property that that you're aware of?
Not not to my knowledge. Um, there uh there there is a dr- preliminary drainage report that was done on this um by Kyle Engineering. Uh, they're here tonight. If you have any more questions, um, that would would have been reviewed by our Public Works Department. Uh, and if there was additional impervious area, they would have had to uh address that.
The i- it did lead into a question, no, friend, that I had because the request to modify the parking area was completed after that drainage report and so there's no water quality provided for that modification that I could see. Um, so I want to ask the applicant about um what's going to be done on that. They're modifying the existing facility to the south, which is great. I think that's a necessity being with how close to the proximity to the South Platte River, but want to make sure that we're addressing uh any changes to that area for the for the parking facility, because I believe that was something that you asked for after for them to modify that. So just something to keep in mind, but go ahead.
Fair question.
So without this twenty-foot fence have has been, has trash been blowing into the Platte River and Centennial Park for the last twenty years? We had a problem with this?
I I I'm I'm not aware of that. I I, you know, our department has never heard of any of those concerns. I I'm I'm guessing there has been some concern. Um, otherwise, they wouldn't have built that in twenty twenty-one. Um. So, but I I have never heard of any of those concerns uh from a com- community development standpoint.
I see. You wouldn't be familiar with any county uh laws that would say that the company could be fined for allowing trash to get out of the facility, wouldn't you? Say that there's got to be something?
I'm not aware of any off the top of my head. I would imagine so. I would imagine so.
And I have more questions. So you said in the beginning that this was less of a burden to the city to do a P U D versus what's the alternative?
So to both parties. So the alternative would have been to um to first vacate, meaning get rid of the the P D that was approved. And it was actually approved in ninety-two. And then there was a a amendment done to it very quickly after it. Then in my staff report, I said ninety-three. It would, that's when it was actually recorded, but it was like at the beginning of ninety-two, the 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 P D was done. And then it was amended uh to for the uh like an expansion to the office building later in ninety-two. But it but the alternative to doing what we're doing would be to vacate that planned development, which would have to go through the exact same process as what we're going through tonight. It would be planning and zoning commission hearing, be neighborhood meeting, planning and zoning commission hearing, city council, and that'd be to get rid of that. Uh, original planned development. And then after that, we'd have to do a new conditional use uh application that would go before this body. So it'd be additional work uh from that standpoint. Uh, and and it would also um give, so for instance, again, the twenty-foot high fence would need a variance for to extend it. So this just left some flexibility in there um to do some things that um wouldn't be as easy to do just under the underlying zoning.
Smarties.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, we'll we'll jump back and forth, friend, if we go back. Okay. Thank you. I still have one more question just to orient me here is the um Waste Management has a a lease on the land for the Canfield properties and what the term of that is?
I do not know the term of that.
Okay.
Can you talk about the landscape that they're that they're going to put in? How many trees or anything?
Uh, I don't have the exact amount off the top of my head, but um it is, it's a pretty dense planting and I asked it to be uh even more dense. Um, it's 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 pretty uh pretty densely planted. Not only got trees, but shrubs as well.
I I think the, it was noted that there was seven and a half percent proposed. It's supposed to be eight percent. So it is very close. There was a high density of it on Union Avenue, which I think is a benefit for uh the public. I I think there there was a request from the City of Littleton to put some plantings on on the south side as well, and I think that needs to be considered for a a buffer to that multifamily uh development.
Yeah, and and we did discuss that in our meeting last week. Uh, that was an an original uh request of theirs. Just screening in general, but they they were looking at some vegetation. And in our meeting last week, um, a couple of things were discussed. One was that recessing the fence back in that one small sort of portion of of the property uh could create a uh, I don't want to say, it, there there's a principle in planning and landscape architecture called crime prevention through environmental design, C P T E D. I'm a landscape architect before I was a planner. Um, and that can create a kind of a hiding spot. Um, and so there was some discussion around that. Uh, there was discussion around the opaque fence. It also, from a uh from Waste Management's perspective, uh would make them move the building to the north. There's a fire lane uh to the south of the building, uh and it created some operational issues for them. So uh by the end of our meeting, uh the City of Littleton Planning Staff said, if you can do uh an opaque wood fe- ten-foot wood fence and the twenty-foot uh litter debris fence, that would be sufficient.
Okay, tha- and that wasn't made clear in in those notes. That would probably be good to have that, because it it seemed like it was Littleton was left in a not.
So.
Final decision.
And so the staff report that went out to everybody was, had to be go out before our meeting with the City of Littleton. And so I have an email from them and I followed up with an email that said, yep, that that that's what will be required of the applicant.
Perfect. Thank you. Other questions?
Just a quick question for you, Brooke. Uh, do we need to make that an amendment when we uh to the P U D if we do approve it?
Uh, in terms of the fence on the south? Uh, you certainly can. Yeah, that's, that'd be, that'd be certain appropriate. And if you'd like some help wording that, I would say you could make another condition that um the applicant uh uh provide a ten-foot opaque wood fence uh um along the residential property to the south. Something like that.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, one of the things that came up during our, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Carl.
Uh, yeah, twenty-foot fence around there will be like a prison. It'd be kind of an isolation to to, in my mind.
Um, like I said, I think you'll be able to see a graphic of it. Um, I mean, if you'd like, I I can. All right, uh, see that? Okay, and 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 this does exist uh already on a a good portion of the property. So you can see, uh now, when they did this graphic, again, this was before our meeting last week, they were proposing a ten-foot chain link with some kind of screening material like slats or uh windscreen material like you see on a tennis court. So that's the the ten-foot fence. And then above it is the relatively uh transparent kind of a netting. Um, and I've been out there a couple of times, but uh you can kind of walk the South Platte River Trail and see it. And um it's pretty transparent, other than those those posts. And you can see they kind of uh slant back towards the top of them. But but that is, that is a ren- rendering of that. I hate to do our applicant's presentation, but um thi- then this is a view, uh I I mentioned there are three-story walk-ups. Uh, but this is a view uh i- as if you were in the third story of those apartments, looking at the waste transfer building. But I don't want to steal our applicant's thunder.
If they're if they're unloading in indoors anyway, that's gonna keep a lot of the trash from blowing around.
Yeah, I I think I think to take away the fencing would be, um, and and Waste Management can probably speak to this better, but I mean, um, I I I I think you you you're trying to mitigate any impacts and and I I think the um, I I don't think visually it's that obtrusive. That's just my opinion from going out there a couple of times.
And I got a question on the parking. There's a lot of comments made on it. Um, they're going to build two hundred and forty-four units.
Spit, no.
Spaces?
Yes.
Okay, so will that absorb the thirty cars that are parked in the uh si- uh park across the street?
Um. Are you saying that those are uh employees parking there or?
Yeah.
Uh, I'm I'm not aware of that, but I I that could very well be true. Um, I don't know. There, a- as I mentioned, it's over the required amount. Um, but but yeah, I I'm I'm not aware of that particular issue. I haven't.
I mean, they're they're not hurting anything over there as long as there's no baseball games going on, but um, parking is valuable. And if they're going to park over there, they could pay Inglewood to park over there or park on their property.
And I think this would probably be a question we could ask the applicant when when they come up, but you bring up a good point, because, you know, one of the questions I have, is that two forty-four just for the employee parking or is that obviously they have their trucks interior to the space? So is that actually two hundred and forty-four employee parking spots?
The the way, the way that um, when I say eighty-six over the required amount, that two hundred and forty-four is what they're the parking lots on the site or are the parking spaces that are on the site. Um, when I say it's eighty-six over the required amount, the required amount is based on what would office space of that square footage require and what would uh warehouse space of that square footage require? Uh, and that, then you get a, okay, this is what's required by the zoning code and they're eighty-six over that.
Okay, I think there could be a little bit of a challenge here because they've they've got trucks that get parked there, so there needs to be spaces for the trucks and there also needs to be spaces for their employees. I don't like extra parking. I don't want to go crazy with it. So like, I I feel like there's a way to work it out here, but um that is a concern, especially if we're actually cutting down the number of existing spaces, looking at the current configuration of the of the parking, just making sure that we're not creating some sort of adverse effect there, too. I think that's a great point, Carl.
And maybe there's an opportunity to add some spaces.
Yeah.
Do we have a number of the employees that work there?
I don't, I don't, I don't, I'm not aware of that number.
Martines? Other questions?
Um, I have one other uh item that i- it came up from our C I P. We had a Union Bridge rehabilitation um project, uh both a paving, I think, as well as I think a project, um, if I'm not mistaken. So yeah, there was about two and a half million dollars, um, yeah, bridge rehab and a bridge repaving. Uh, was that completed? Is that still in process?
Um, I do not believe that project has been completed yet. I do believe it's planned. And I think we've got somebody from Public Works here if you have any other, you know, questions about that.
I get, we've got a thousand trucks going over there a day. Uh, that's a a big part of the load. Um, that that's going to be happening is it, they pay a tip fee, I believe, that that goes to the City of Inglewood. Um, it does that account for enough to cover those bridge rehab fees? Because that's a majority of the people, Inglewood doesn't really go over there, you know, it's a facility that we own that's really serving a lot of this area. So, you know, are we making sure that the the uses are being covered and and the improvements that we need to construct are being covered by the uses that are over there?
And I don't have the numbers on that. Like I said, we do have somebody uh from Public Works here that may or may not be able to answer that. Would you like?
Yeah.
To pursue that?
If we, yeah, we might as well ask the question. Yeah.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Jeff.
You'll you'll need to be sworn in and everything. So, go ahead.
Yes. Uh, my name's Kyle Branham. I'm the engineering supervisor in Public Works. Um, would you like to restate your question?
Pushed the wrong button over here. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Kyle. Um, the question is, we've got a couple million dollars allocated for Union Avenue Bridge Rehab and and Repair. And are the fees that we receive from these facilities, does that cover those costs that we have, the uh outlay basically for this facility? Because there's not a lot of Inglewood that's over on that side of Union or on that side of the river that's connected by the Union Avenue Bridge. So just curious on on how that is being funded.
Um, I can say, uh, I I don't know the answer to the question, but I would have to assume that it doesn't cover all of all the fees.
Yeah, and there's obviously tax benefits and things like that that we're getting out of the property. And I'm not saying that that should be the only thing that's going on there. It's just a question where we we had a C I P for this year um for that specific reason. And it sounds like they're not adding usable space. The, you know, the the applicant's description is that they're covering space, which I think is a great idea. Um, keeping things inside is going to be a real benefit. Uh, keeping things as a drive-through as opposed to backing up. Um, but there are, you know, obviously uses that are higher intensity, which this facility is, than maybe a a normal industrial type of facility. So just making sure that we're asking the questions that we need to ask as we're improving the the area and if there's And if there's gonna be increased usage, then how are we accounting for that?
Yeah, yeah, the I believe the traffic study said there was no increased volume, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Carl.
Cool. Good?
I think, yeah, appreciate it. We might have to do it later, but thank you very much, yeah. Anybody else have any questions there?
The fire, I don't know what the cause of the fire the last summer, was it last summer, I believe it was?
It was.
Is there measures to control that happening again? Or you see, you see trash trucks catching on fire all the time.
Right.
So if they bring a fire in and dump it into an inside building, it's gonna take off probably.
Sure. I I think I think the applicant can answer that better. They also have some of their team here of their engineers and architects. So I think they could answer that better than than me. I'm more of a zoning guy than a fire guy, but I know that that's one of their goals.
And I believe you noted that they have to then go through the building code process. And so there's additional, I think that would be have to be covered within that side of it, but that's a great question and just kind of have that noted.
Good, good, good question.
Okay. With that, go ahead into the applicant presentation unless there's any other questions right now? Or I actually hope I, sorry, I didn't check in with you. How are you over there?
Thanks for checking in. No questions for me at this time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's go ahead. Go ahead, Carl.
The public drop-off inside the facility, is that gonna be just you drive in and dump a load of stuff and leave? Or is it gonna cost anything?
I'll let the applicant, they can answer that better than I can as well, in terms of the public drop-off of recycling, what have you.
Now, now that I mentioned that, I think that's like, it's pretty expensive to do it now. You can do it now, but it's like fifty bucks for a pickup loader, something like that. So I probably, I think I answered my own question.
Okay.
Let's go ahead and move forward and go into the applicant. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
You're on. Oh, now you're off.
I do. My name is Jason Khan. I'm with WM, otherwise known as Waste Management. I'm our Planning and Development and Strategy Director for the Four Corners area, which covers this facility. Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to present today. And I'll try and answer some of the questions that came up as well. And just so you know, I do have several members from WM, our consulting staff as well. We also have representatives from the Canfields here also. So if I do need some assistance in answering any of the questions, I may need to call on them for some of the more detailed questions. So I'm, as we go through this executive summary, I'm gonna add some stuff in here, hopefully to address some of the questions. But as you know, this facility burned down in June of twenty twenty-two. And part of the what we were working on before that, that's not in here, we were actually planning to improve the facility prior to the fire. So that was going to include fire suppression. Unfortunately, we didn't get those improvements made in time. So here we are today, reconstructing. And that's what this is about. But we have already leased an agreement with the Canfields, a lease agreement with the Canfields for the property to the west that's in place already. The reconstructed facility is going to continue to manage similar materials as before, mostly the MSW and recyclable materials. So MSW is municipal solid waste, which is your general trash from residential, commercial. And then we do take both residential and commercial recycling into the facility as well and transfer that to a processing facility in Denver to pull all the materials out. So it's a single stream, all in one, and it's transferred out. But I think I want to add a few things in maybe really quick before I move into this next one to address. So the parking spots that we are discussing, we did take into account all of our employees to have all of our employees park in the confines of the WM property in addition with the Canfield. And I'll show you on one of the upcoming slides where all that parking is. And the two hundred and eighty-six spots is for employees, not for the trash truck parking, that's separate. So I just thought I would clarify that first off. We talked about this facility being fully enclosed. And one of the points maybe that I should make is the reason the facility is larger in square footage is because by having that enclosed facility, we need to get the trucks in there. We need to turn them and be able to back up to unload. So it adds quite a bit of square footage to the building to keep all the trucks and waste inside the building. So that's the large variation from the proposed square footage to the previous square footage is allowing those trucks to turn and unload inside the building. The public drop-off, just to clarify a couple of things on that, it's located on the north side of the building. That waste or those materials that are traditionally unloaded could include, you know, carpet, shingles, furniture, a host of different materials. And it is meant to get them in and out and keep them separated from the commercial vehicles from a safety standpoint. I think we can all kind of agree that we don't want a giant trash truck sitting next to a residential car. And our concern is always safety, not only of our employees, but of our customers. So one of the reasons why we want to continue to keep that area segregated from our main area is for safety for those public customers. Those public customers, there are charges at the gate. I don't have those. If we need those, I think one of the individuals here could help with those. Those rates are usually posted at the gate and available if someone calls in as well. And they are set by what it costs us to manage those materials, transfer them to the landfill and then dispose of it. So all of those costs, while it may seem high, all of the transportation disposal, people, heavy equipment and everything that's contained within those rates is also not, doesn't come at a low cost. The facility is located further, and this is a big point, further west from the South Platte River. That is somewhat intentional, but it also is driven by the property boundaries and not being able to have buildings over property lines and keep them operational. But we believe that's also good from a community standpoint to keep us a little bit distanced from the river and increase our potential to manage everything on site. It's a fully integrated fire suppression system inside of the building to, I think that was one of the questions brought up. But we have these facilities all across the country and we have been updating them. Unfortunately, fires have become much more common, not only in transfer station facilities, but recycling facilities. A lot of that is due to technology improvements, mainly lithium ion batteries, which cause a lot of these fires. We don't know for sure that this facility fire was caused by that, but we have evidence of multiple other fires across the country that are caused by those. So one thing, we would never build one of these facilities without a fire suppression in it. And that was part of the improvements that we were going to be doing prior to the fire, or previous to the fire. Again, these services, this facility's been here for quite a while. It is what I would consider an essential service to the community, trash recycling. It also fits in with the goals of what I believe, not only Inglewood, but the surrounding community in Colorado, trying to improve our diversion goals from the landfill. The recycling specifically is one of the things that we do at this facility that a lot of transfer stations don't manage. So that helps us make those, keep those costs low for the customers that are bringing the material in, which all of the recycling is mainly bought brought in by commercial vehicles from residences and commercial businesses. And then lastly, as he talked about, we did meet with the City of Littleton well ahead of having the discussion with them. We met with the city manager and the Public Works Director. And we outlined a lot of what you're seeing here today. We are trying to be transparent. We are neighbors of them and we believe we need to be kind of in front of it. So we did that ahead of being required to to make sure they were fully in the loop. Our initial interpretation is they fully support it. It's definitely improvement from what's there now and what was there before. The issue that came up with Littleton after, as Brooke talked about, we were more than willing to come to the table to discuss that and resolve it because we want to be a partner in this process as well. And lastly, the neighborhood meeting was public notice and the apartment buildings, we worked with the property owners to have them post that at those facilities. They did not provide us specific mailing addresses, but it was posted on the facility so all residents could see it. And we did not have anybody show up from that specific development or contact us with any concerns. So I just wanted to note that as well. I'm gonna talk about a couple of the other questions as we get into it a little bit. But I do want to talk just a little bit about traffic. And we are intending to main drain current traffic levels. I should say, since the fire, we have actually seen some decreased traffic due to some lost customers. We've had some shutdowns that we've had to do because we are operating open air. So we've had some customers go away to find other options during those instances. We expect when the facility comes back online that we hope to get those customers back. So that's why we're saying up to traffic, existing previous traffic. Again, it is an amendment to the plan development. I have one correction on here. We are expecting to break ground in twenty twenty-four after we receive approval and the necessary permits. However, the project likely won't be completed by early twenty twenty-five. It'll probably push into mid twenty twenty-five and maybe potentially later. It's all dependent on materials and supply chain. But based on our anticipated start date, it'll probably be mid till later in twenty twenty-five. So that is a correction that I wanted to make. And I want to make sure I covered the rest of the questions here. I'll address a couple as we get into it. I know there was a question on site drainage being addressed. We believe that's adequate based on what we know. But again, if there's more specifics needed on that, I would probably defer to one of my colleagues here in the audience. So if you do want that addressed further, I can bring them up. We believe it's adequate based on what we've calculated, even with the changes that were made on what you discussed. So I want to point out a couple of things here, if I can get the pointer to work. There it is. Traffic coming into this facility is still going to come down this main route where the scale house is. And we'll circle around this area. It currently goes around this area and comes out. Our existing truck traffic also utilizes this gate. Employees come in right here and are parked here. So when we get to the next drawing, I'm gonna point out the employee parking a little clearer as well. So employee parking, I want to kind of clarify on this. This area here is all employee parking. This is the hauling or what we call our collection facility. All the parking in front of that here and to the side of it is also all employee parking. We have some additional employee parking located behind our maintenance building here. And then we have some employee parking added back here, which is the big increase that you will see that should address all of our employee count. We added up all of our employees, including drivers, technicians, helpers, admin, the transfer station operators. I should also note there's for our scale house attendants, there's a couple of parking spots by the scale house as well for those employees. So the question about where or will all employees be able to park on site? Yes, they will. And that's why all of this parking has been added back here on the Canfield property. So there is a lot of additional parking being added as a result of this as well. Where the trucks are currently parked, all these lines that you see here and here and some of them here, that is where our trash trucks are parked. Those are not part of the parking numbers that you saw. So I hope that clarifies what is employee and what is truck parking, commercial truck parking. I want to kind of just go over the traffic flow a little bit on this diagram now with the new facility. Again, this is Union Avenue here and to the north is left here. As you come in the facility, you will go through the scale house facility. That's where everything is tracked. They will come in. If it's a public drop-off customer, they will go to this area right here. And that's again for safety reasons. If it's a trash truck or a recycle truck, they will come in here and go around the facility, come into the building and unlock, go into the enclosed facility, turn and back up and unload. And then they will go out this way, back across the scales and then exit the facility back onto Union Avenue. If it's a transfer trailer, and a transfer trailer is the trailers that we load the waste into and then take it to the landfill, those will also come in here, go across the scale. There is what's called a loadout tunnel that will go in here and it will actually go down into the ground to allow those trailers to be top loaded. And again, all undercover to eliminate potential for litter. And then they will be loaded in these two loadouts right here. They will come out, go around the facility, go back out to scales and onto Union Avenue. Our existing traffic up for the employees of the hauling company, the collection company will remain the same as what I previously indicated. So I think there's been a couple of questions that we talked to one of the neighbors about. There is an easement right over here that is pretty narrow. It will be used for maybe a couple of employees coming in with traditional trucker cars, but that will not be used as our main entrance. This main entrance that is currently there right up here will continue to be our primary and main entrance for this transfer station. I just wanted to make sure that was clarified as well. And one other point that I want to make that probably isn't in this is we met with our neighbor here to the north of the Canfield property and currently in what's designed. And the final designs are not complete, so there's more details that'll go in. But this fence line that is right here, WM is currently talking to that neighbor and we will likely improve that fence to either a six or an eight foot. We don't have the exact improvements, but we have are committing to do that. And I'm saying that, so this is on record. And I know she is in the audience, so. And I talked to Brooke about that as well. So WM will commit to improve that fence in between our, the Canfield property and that property as well. Couple of points to point out on this. This is kind of an elevated view from the river section. That taller litter fence is also present in this fixture. It's currently there. You can see the the smaller fence down here is a screen fence. That is kind of a see-through type netting, similar to what you would see almost at a golf course or a top golf. It is able to be replaced if it rips or tears. And addressing some of the the questions that maybe came up or comments, we would definitely like to keep that in place, even though we are moving to an enclosed facility. We've spent a lot of time with the South Suburban on the trails. And one of our goals is to protect that river corridor. We know there's a growing presence on those trails as well. And that's important to us to keep that litter fence there to ensure that we can keep all of that potential. Potential litter which will be greatly reduced on our property and managed as timely as possible. So. And and I think the other question that came up that Brooke someone answered was. The twenty foot litter fence to the west was in and what we proposed at the public meeting. It has always been our intention to extend that. Because that's our same goal going to be protect those residential neighbors to the south of us. Uh, and one other thing that I will call out in the facility that's not on the presentation is. Uh, in a lot of cases, we do try to put misting facilities uh, inside these and. Those can help control orders. We don't necessarily have an order control problem. But we do have the ability to control those orders uh, much better in an enclosed facility. But we also have the ability to apply misting uh, technology to better control them if needed. So I I thought I would call that out. Uh, again, from the river view here. The the only thing they're going to see is this right here is a almost like a a maintenance type bay. To maintain loaders or heavy equipment in it's it's basically an awning. It's open. They can get out of the sun to maintain the heavy equipment. This is the loadout tunnel that the truck would be coming out of and and going around uh, the facility. And then this here is the entrance door uh, to the facility for those trucks to tip. So I think I made one mistake. I said this was a view from the plat, but this is a an elevated view from where those apartments are. So I wanted to correct that really quick. Uh, and you can see. This is where the trucks would come around right here and then drive into the facility. This is where the transfer trucks will come out. Uh, I know that comment about pushing the fencing up and adding vegetation. We are extremely tight on this facility in order to get the enclosed facility, the loadout tunnel. Uh, proper traffic flow, be able to turn the trucks with the proper radiuses. Uh, safety is extremely important, not only to our customers, but to our employees. So. That was why we wanted to have the conversation with uh, Inglewood and Littleton on. We are willing to accept that opaque wood fence and and I think I have a picture of what it looks like now. I I do not have a picture of uh, what it will look like with the wood, but we can ensure that it will match existing. And we will extend that all along that west property a- as well. So and some of that we can see. Uh, in the next rendering after this one. This is the view from the river and my apologies for mixing that up. Uh, you can see that cannon levered uh, litter fence in here, that twenty foot high litter fence. A- as well as the smaller chain link fence. This is pretty realistic depiction of what it looks like from that trail. Uh, i- if you were to walk along it, I I did walk along it the other day just to make sure my viewpoint was correct in these renderings. Uh, it it looks about like this, except you don't see the facility right now, uh, because it's not there. But from the from the river, as you can see here, there are no openings. Uh, in that facility or viewpoints for direct trash. And and I think that's an important point to note. Uh, this is the view from ground level from the residential area to the south of us. This fence right here is actually mostly existing. It's currently a ten foot screened fence. Our initial intention was to leave that in place. Uh, we felt like it was doing what it was meant to do. Uh, again, as I noted, uh, the discussions with Inglewood and Littleton. Uh, we will extend and that wood fence starts probably right about here. It's the same height and it's on the same uh, direction. So we will just tie into that and extend that. Uh, opaque wood fence, the remainder of that distance. So instead of. It'll be the same height as what's depicted in here, but it will be wood instead of this chain link with the screening on it. Again, someone coming out here and then using these this basketball court uh, in this area. Uh, they won't be able to see most of the traffic because of the ten foot fence and. Any of the waste will be contained within the facility. It is another reason why we kind of moved toward an enclosed facility, one to protect the river. But also because we have a residential development directly behind us. Uh, we'd have a longstanding operation in this area and have no major issues with that. Uh, residential development to the south of us uh, uh, outstanding. And I'm not going to read this to you, but I I will say, you know, we greatly appreciate the opportunity to work with Inglewood and Littleton. Uh, as well, we've we've been a long term partner uh, to Inglewood. Uh, we continue to have employees that live in Inglewood and the surrounding areas. What we're putting in here, uh, we believe is taking into account several items that are actually improving. Our operations, some of that we are taking on at our own. Because we want this facility, one, to address the concerns that have been there in the past. Uh, and and two, make sure we're maintaining a good community relation. Uh, for many years to come. This isn't a facility that's going to be here for ten fifteen years. It will be here for many, many years, hopefully thirty, forty, fifty years into the future. And we are trying to put it in the right way the first time, especially since uh, we're kind of starting from scratch. So we do appreciate uh, the partnership that we have with Inglewood. Uh, Inglewood benefits as well from uh, the tonnage that comes into this facility that they can use. Uh, for other activities and we understand that. Uh, we do believe that this is a great improvement from what we had there. Uh, it's unfortunate that it came about this way. I will say that improvements were again going to be completed uh, before the fires broke out, but obviously that didn't happen. So. Uh, we could, we we appreciate our opportunity to continue this redevelopment and. Uh, I appreciate your time and if you have questions, I will try to answer them. If I can't answer them, I may need to have someone come up and assist. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Uh, yeah, Carl.
The uh, trucks you're talking about are those? The 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 trash trucks will be parked there. Will the uh, semis, the transfer trucks? Fifty foot semis be parked there?
Uh, the transfer trucks currently do not park at this facility. They park at another facility in Commerce City. We have another transfer station there. And those operations are housed out of that facility. So they are parked and maintained out of that facility. Uh, they start there in the morning and then they run uh, over to South Metro and to the landfill from there. But they finish at Commerce City.
Okay.
So no, no change in that.
Thank you. Um, how many um, collection trucks currently operate out of the facility?
I I didn't quite hear you. I apologize.
How many train, how many collection trucks currently operate out of this?
Uh, we, right now, uh, we have about a hundred and twenty five routes running out of there. So about requires a truck. Uh, that's about current right now.
That's current. And um, with the new facility, the new parking, how many trucks will this facility support?
The 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 collection operations are not changing. That is not impacted. Uh, and and I should have clarified that. The reason the collection facility is part of this discussion is because it's one uh, planned development. And it addresses both the transfer station and the collection facility. The collection facility happens to be part of the planned development. So that part of the the operation is not changing. Uh, as a result of this. So really the truck count of what's there currently will remain the same thereafter. Now, we are always looking at uh, can we locate trucks in other areas of the Denver metro? And we are looking at uh, building another facility in a in another area which would decrease that truck count for a a period of time. But as you know, Denver and the metro area Inglewood continues to grow.
Yep.
And we would expect that truck come to then build back up, but that is the maximum. Uh, there there's out, there's some ancillary trucks that run out of there. Uh, you know, delivery carts and and uh, toders uh, that are not in there. But I believe at that facility, we are about maxed out. At that a hundred and twenty five, it may vary a little bit from that. So if I need to get you an exact count, I could go back to the operations and do that.
No, no, I mean, and to to just cut to it is, you know, the building is going to be more than twice the size of the previous building. And I'm wondering what additional capacity. Um, is going to be available at the site. And ultimately getting back to additional traffic, additional use of the bridge, all of that. That's that's really my question is. Um, I'm sure you're forward thinking here and you're you're planning about future capacity. And I'm really getting to what is the the future capacity of of?
For for both facilities or for just the collection?
For use of this facility and ultimately the use of the infrastructure.
So for the transfer station, it is, it is larger. So we, you know, we handled more waste than the past actually than we currently are. So it will definitely have the space to build up to that. Uh, it is expandable if we do need to add on to it. That is something that we are designing into it. If we need to expand it in the future as far as a square footage standpoint. Uh, we could do that. It is obviously costly to add on and add square footage later. But the way we are designing it, we believe it addresses our current capacity. But our future capacity to build back up to what isn't coming in there today.
And and do you have those sort of growth projections or, you know, what you're planning for?
The tonnage numbers or?
Yeah. And again, I'm getting back to use of the infrastructure, use of the bridge. What what does waste management see happening here over fifteen, twenty years? The growth of um, of the operation here.
So meaning how long the facility would have that capacity?
No, I'm asking specifically about, I'm sure waste management is projecting for added usage.
For the facility.
Yep.
Uh, I don't have those with me today. Uh, I'm sure we have some type of a growth projection and what that looks like from a tonnage standpoint. Uh, I don't know if one of uh, my colleagues here may have it, but I don't know that we would have that with us today. We could provide it. As a follow up if needed.
And and you understand what I'm asking here is that. You know, the impact to the infrastructure that this, the the taxpayers of Inglewood pay for. That waste management uses and that there's a a tip fee associated. What does that growth look like? Are we planning for the future? Um, as waste management uses the infrastructure more and more and more over time. How are we planning for that? And how is the infrastructure going to be impacted over time?
Well, I will say we are planning for the future by the size of the building. It is definitely bigger than what was there. Some of that is for. Indoor, you know, unloading, but it is even without that. It's still about twenty percent maybe bigger than what we had as floor capacity before. Uh, we know there's other potential diversion materials coming uh, with changing regulations in Colorado. Uh, specifically, some of those could come as a result of EPR and other regulations. Uh, certain communities are moving to divert organics and green waste. So we are planning for that and have the potential to manage that inside this facility. It could get to a point, uh, and and that could be, we we would hope not to put any money into this facility for at least fifteen to twenty years. Uh, obviously, if we haven't done that diligence, then we're not being a a good shareholder to our company as well.
Brenda?
Uh, you said you have other transfer facilities in the metro area. Can you tell me where those are?
Uh, yes, we have a a transfer facility very similar to what this reconstructed facility will look like in Commerce City. It's called uh, disposal and recycling transfer station and it's located just off uh, Interstate two seventy.
Does this represent the most cost effective solution for waste management?
Say that part again.
Does this outbuilding and re redoing this represent the most cost effective? Uh, decision for waste management?
Well, we believe the facility, not only from that standpoint, but taking in all the factors, environmental. Uh, costs, everything, that this is the best facility that we could build for this location.
And and so regardless of whether or not we approve this PUD, you are going to push forward with this plan, right?
Say say that again.
Regardless of uh, whether or not we approve the PUD, you are going to to push on. If we weren't approved the PUD, you would move on to do to uh, what it uh, he said that it variants and uh. Vacate the property, right? You would still push forward with this problem, with this plan, right?
Well, the uh, and I want to be careful on how I answer this question to make sure that I don't say something wrong, but. We we've worked diligently and probably extended our timeframes to ensure that. We've accounted for a lot of stuff that we found out after this fire, specifically the existing building that was there before. Uh, cross property lines. Uh, we probably may have rebuilt it on that existing property. And but we couldn't because it was crossing a property line. And if you put in. Demising walls and everything else, we wouldn't have been able to reconstruct and keep it operational. So. I would say I would hope that what we've presented has addressed. And and maybe even gone beyond addressing what would traditionally be recovered, but. Or required, but even well beyond that, uh, we we could have proposed an uh, three sided or open facility. Uh, we could have done a bunch of different things, but we waited and tried to come forth with what we believe is the best facility. Not only for waste management from an operational and efficiency standpoint, but the best facility for the location. And when I say that, because the river is right there, because we have a residential development right behind us. And how we are going to operate it long term, what took us so long to get to this point? And we've been operating almost a year and a half since the fire, not ideal for us or for anything around there. Is we want to do this right and do it right for not only us, but for Inglewood and and for the surrounding community. So. Well, I will say, yes, we will push forward. I would hope what we have done. Is more than addressed and even went beyond the requirements that we are to comply with.
And I I believe Brenda, your your question is it's a use by right in industrial one because they had a PUD. They have to go through this process. They could go through this process. If we rejected the PUD. They could then get rid of the PUD. It would be another step for them. They probably could just do it by right then at that point anyway. So I think trying to. Have these conversations and and get the best thing possible is beneficial to everybody. Go ahead.
And 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 I would like to add too, there is a secondary point that I probably haven't mentioned. The reason that we are putting this facility entirely on the Canfield property is. We are trying to keep the facility operational during the entire construction process. And if we try to reconstruct on the existing waste management property. The only option would be to completely shut down. And it probably, it's about a eighteen month construction period. So we would likely lose all of that business. They will find somewhere else to go and they may never come back. To utilize the facility, but we will still push forward rebuilding it. That that's not only a loss, we believe to customers that are currently using us and expecting. Uh, to have this service because they built their business around this facility. Uh, and that's not just waste management. There's a lot of other trash companies. Uh, there's uh, shinglers, there's. Uh, handyman, et cetera, public that utilized us. But it also is a disadvantage to Inglewood on losing those dollars that they get paid for every ton. That comes into the facility as well. So we, our goal, and and we talked to through this internally with Inglewood. Is we want to keep the facility functional throughout the construction period. As well.
Thank you for that clarification. Carl?
Uh, the the added land that you're acquiring, the the Inglewood RV storage area there is, is that uh? Uh, did you acquire that for expansion or is that just part of the build at the current build that you're planning? That's a lot, that's a lot of land. I I don't know. Doesn't seem like it's going to get used.
I I'm not quite sure I understood the question.
The 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 property that uh. Is at the bottom of that is the old storage place?
This this right here?
Yeah.
So.
Okay, that's uh, there's parking there.
As you can see, there's employee parking down here. Uh, this is an existing residential house that we are going to reuse for our. This is an existing residential house that we are going to reuse for our construction trailer and employees as well. And then uh current currently, we we store some containers up in this area. So this right here would be like potential roll off storage. But also what we are lacking at this facility. And from a safety standpoint, uh waste management or W M conducts what we call uh post trips and uh pre-trip safety uh courses and those are backing courses, a a host of other things. So this area, this open area in here will be utilized for those activities, which we currently are unable to perform at the facility because we don't have any extra space to do so.
So that that was the RV storage areas. Are all the RVs gone?
Yes, uh, but we worked with the Canfields on that and the goal was to vacate all of that by sometime in twenty twenty four. But uh they went a a little bit ahead of our schedule and all of those RVs uh have been vacated. And the property is uh is unused at this point uh in time.
Do you uh? I've I've heard a lot of apartments cannot get recycling pickups. Uh, do you, is there a reason for that or is that just? Do you, I don't know if you would know that or not, but the most of the apartments in the Inglewood do not have recycling availability because they can't get it. Do you know why that is or?
I I can answer it. It might not be the best answer, but uh we do offer what we will call multifamily recycling options to all of our customers. In many cases, that's up to the facility owner uh to want those services and to include them as an option for the residents. So uh we definitely offer that service and do it at many, many uh multifamily residences throughout the area.
Yeah, um, you had mentioned that this facility serves uh provides service for mostly residential and commercial waste. Um, has that always been the case? And and again, I'm not familiar with the industry and all of that. I'm just wondering if um, you know, if there had ever been sort of hazardous waste and if this facility will allow in the future, you know, hazardous waste to be on the site.
A goo- good question. Uh, this facility takes no hazardous waste and never has. The facility, when I say M S W, M S W is usually the municipal solid waste, just to clarify what that term means. Has always been commercial and residential. I just like to be as transparent as possible and that's why I say commercial, residential, both on the M S W and the recycle side has always come into that facility. There's been different uses at this facility in the past. At one point, we actually had a recycle processing facility. And times have changed, technologies improved. We now have better facilities that can sort that uh more efficiently and cost effectively and actually recycle the material. So that's why we are now transloading the recycle to another uh recycling facility.
And and then one more uh short question. You said that the public meeting that was held, there was nobody in attendance from the public at that?
No, we had uh and I don't have it in front of me, but I, we only had a couple people show up. But I think it was three, three people show up. They were residences and I believe they actually were Littleton residences. If I rec recall right. No, it was not the apartments. It was just to the south of that residential development. I I remember asking them uh specifically uh where they were located at. And I I know we had a sign in sheet and I I just don't have that in front of me, but they were to the south of that residential development. And very supportive, I will say, uh, just because of what we are doing to address at a higher level than than what we initially have there now.
Sure. Michelle?
I just have a couple of quick questions. You mentioned a whole list of municipalities and other organizations that you went through. And I didn't think I heard anything about, isn't there a Platte River Authority that controls part of that, part of your borders? Or since you're right on the plat, do you know?
You know, I do not know. I can.
It's I don't.
I I don't have the answer.
I I can try to find out, but. It's the Colorado Water Conservation Board that owns the.
Okay, well, that too. Um, okay, I was, I was just curious, but I'm sure there's, you know, that's you're not really going that far to the river anyway, so I don't, it's not part of this P U D. But I was just curious if if they ever, you know, came to any of your meetings or.
No, 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 the the only three people that showed up at the meetings were the the residences.
Okay, and then how long is the lease with the Canfield property?
Uh, well, we have an existing lease that's been, it's been long term. And we, it's a very long term lease uh with the extensions at the end of it.
Okay.
Well, beyond uh the thirty years that I've been talking about potentially.
Okay, well, because it's obviously a big, big part of this.
Enough to justify spending the the money on this facility.
Yeah, um, and then just so I get my boundaries all straight, is, or one of these fences that you've been talking about right on the um Inglewood Littleton property or lines? Is that broke? Is that about what a question for you? Okay, okay, I just want to make, because we were looking at maps that are really seems to be this way. But no, I I've got my orientation. I just.
So so this this line right here on this side of this map is the Inglewood and
Right.
Littleton line.
Right, that's what I, that's what I thought it was, so. Because, yeah, I'm looking at, you know, map, Google Maps kind of thing.
Yeah, it's oriented a little different on our plans to fit in on the page. So uh the north side is to the left and the south side is to the right. And the Littleton Inglewood property boundary is on the right side of those plans.
Okay, all right. I I'm surprised by the lack of, I mean, I'm pleasantly surprised, I guess, in some ways that the there weren't that many people at the neighborhood meeting. Either I'm pleasantly surprised because they are all for it or I'm concerned that they didn't know about it, so. But anyway, thank you very much. That's my, into my question.
Thank you.
Great. Michelle, uh, I do have a couple of follow up uh questions on uh some of the things that we asked earlier. But one of the questions I hadn't asked that I wanted to make sure I understood and this might be a question and something you alluded to on the cover page, there's um that W M may expand transfer station in the future, north setback would be reduced. Is that a allowance that would be approved with this or would that have to come back through the process to uh to?
If we were to expand the footprint?
Yeah.
Yes, we would have to come back and go through uh the building permit and process
Okay.
uh to expand that.
Okay, that was um first question I.
That that's why we're trying to right size it, not only for today, but for the I I'll say fifteen, twenty year future because uh any modifications are, take time and and also it costs money, so.
Great, thank you for that clarification. Uh, the other question, so we have an opaque fence on the south uh side, a wood fence. But right now it's showing a slatted fence uh against the Platte River corridor. And that's what's out there right now is, it looks very clear from your renderings. I, you know, I've I've ridden by there. I've never really noticed, is it? Is is it really that clear? Like, is that something that we need to make an opaque fence on on this side? Maybe just a point of conversation, uh, is there a real picture of this as opposed to a rendering uh that might be able to see that anybody has?
A a real picture is what?
Yeah, not a rendering of what it might kind of look like.
I have one on my phone, but
Okay.
I I don't have one on my.
Is, but there's no requirement from our industrial side that that's an opaque fence, that the slots are sufficient for for the use here? Okay. Okay.
And and I I will say the the definite thing that I want to point out on this slide is the viewpoint of what they are seeing now versus what they will be seeing in the future is literally a building. And if you walk the trail, there's a lot more items that are going to be much more intrusive than what they will be seeing here.
Uh, and then I think the question that you said you might need a little assistance on is the modification to the parking lot for employees was requested, I believe, after the drainage report was done. And you discussed what is going to happen with the water quality from the reconfigured drainage, uh reconfigured parking lot. Who gets lucky, uh, straw? Thank you.
I do. Matt Erickson, I'm with KIWA Engineering, civil engineer. Address is fifty six thirty four Wesley Wood, Littleton, Colorado. Uh, the question, so from a, the additional parking that's going to be on the northeast end of the site, that that area. So the the actual impervious area is going to decrease slightly. Uh, we're we're reducing the number of parking spots in that area. And we'll have additional landscaping within the right away. So right now, the plan isn't to add any additional water quality for that area. If we need to, we haven't gotten to the final design process yet. So if we go through the the process and it's determined that we need to, we will add water quality.
Yeah, I I think, you know, obviously, there's a reality that there's an existing parking lot out there without any sort of treatment for the water quality. Is this an opportunity to be able to, you know, provide a a benefit to what's out there right now? I believe, maybe you could confirm, does it go to the sand oil separators that are out there? Or does that parking lot drain straight off into the river? I guess, is there an opportunity maybe to put in even a hydrodynamic separator or something along those lines that would at least capture some of the the trash, some of the debris and not be able to, you know, have a direct discharge into the into the river?
Right, so the, within the fence line, so, let's see if I can get this word. There's a fence line right there that separates the employee parking lot from the site itself or the transfer station vehicles there. Anything within the fence line that does go to a sand oil interceptor for water quality treatment? I can't remember right off if the employee parking area does drain to the east as well. Part of it does, the other part drains towards Union. I just don't know where the the brake line is. And again, if if that's, as we go through this process, finalizing the drainage report, looking at those requirements, we'll work with the city and if if water quality is required, we'll add that.
It, can you maybe confirm, was the request from the city to modify that parking done after that drainage report was completed?
I believe it was, yeah. We had, so we had made at least the first submittal of the drainage report. And then this this comment came up and I don't recall whether the second submittal. Yeah, we'd already finalized the drainage report, so, but it's not finalized, I'll say that. We're we're still working on the final design, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Matt.
Sure.
Any other questions anyone wants to bring up? Uh, Hope, did you have anything else? Uh, yeah, go ahead, Hope. Uh, I can't see you, but I believe. Okay. Oh, sorry, we're not to the public comment quite yet. Thank you, though. Uh, we have one council member, uh, that is, that is not, uh, she's a member that's not uh in presence and is remote right now. So, yeah, Hope, go go ahead. We can hear you.
Okay, awesome, thank you. No, I don't have any additional questions at this time.
All right, thank you very much. One other quick question. This is only a waste management facility, right? No other providers uh or utilize your facilities at a, you know, feed to them or anything like that, uh, commercial facilities? Because Inglewood does not have a a single source uh provider right now. I believe that's still the case. So no other, do any other facilities or any other companies utilize your facilities?
Well, uh, our facility, the collection facility is W M only. The transfer station is open to other customers. That that could be public or other commercial customers. So we take, all of our competition comes in there as well. And then that's their transfer point to then get out to the landfill. That was my comment earlier that I was trying to address, that if this facility isn't there, it doesn't just affect waste management. It affects hundreds of other uh customers that supply trash services and recycling services to the community. And they then would have to haul that to somewhere else as well. So it is not just W M coming into this facility. It is a host of numerous different customers, hundreds.
Like you said, that would be a big impact, so thank you. And go ahead.
I was on the uniform trash committee. To my knowledge, Republic uses the transfer facility in Commerce City, correct?
Republic uses both facilities.
Okay, what other trash company uses your facility, that facility in Inglewood specifically? That service, Inglewood today, so we got Republic, Waste Connections and Waste Management. Those are the only three that I'm aware of that service, Inglewood. Is there anybody else?
A as far as customers?
No, as far as trash providers.
Oh, yes, there's tens of different.
Two residential homes, not apartments.
Yes, there is many other residential uh suppliers coming into this facility.
But not not from Inglewood particularly, potentially, I think is the question. But that's, and that, but they're servicing this whole area, right? So they, it's, it's, it's a centralized facility.
He's talking about construction workers who dump their stuff off. I'm talking about
I'm talking.
What what trash collectors are available to residential customers today that use your facility? It residential.
In Inglewood only? You know, I don't have that answer directly. I don't know the waste haulers in Inglewood. I know we haul waste in Inglewood. Uh, I don't know who else does. But as far as the residential trash that comes in and it just doesn't come from Inglewood. This facility also accepts trash from outside of the city of Inglewood. So there are numerous other haulers and I don't have that list in front of me. But uh Waste Connections, Republic, Home Builders, Apex, uh, I I could go on. There's tens of them. I just don't have them all uh memorized in my head.
No, that's fine. I was just interested in the major carriers anyway. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, uh, thank you again for all the information. Commissioners, any other? Quick, Carl, yes, go ahead.
One one more thing, uh, the uh semis that haul the trash from the facility to the landfill. Do you recommend or require them to follow a certain route?
Traditionally, it is a, we don't require them to follow a certain route. But they route it uh pretty standard, so it's based on traffic. So sometimes they uh, they obviously go out on the Union and most of the time go back to Santa Fe. And then depending on traffic, some of them go down Bellevue and out that way. Or sometimes they'll go to E four seventy and take that route. It's all depending on the time of the day and how much traffic is on highways. So they have routing software that they utilize to give them the best route that doesn't have them sitting in traffic for an hour, hour and a half.
I I I see them on Bellevue all the time, but I I've seen them go down Hampton, which basically goes right through the middle of Inglewood.
It, they, they do use Hampton as well. Uh, it it's a combination. So I I did, sometimes they do turn left, sometimes they do turn right uh out of the facility.
But you have no control over them?
We we subcontract that work out to a subcontractor. And we don't tell them which route to utilize. And I don't believe they're restricted on which roads they can use as long as they meet the the C dot and other requirements for weight limits, which all of that waste is scaled in and scaled out. And we do have requirements that they meet those weight limits, uh, the legal weight limits for for the roadways.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. No, thank you all for questions, conversation. With that, we'll open public testimony. Uh, if anyone in the audience is uh here to speak on behalf of the projects. You you come up and um we'll go ahead and swear you in and and get your name information. So this is opportunity to provide public testimony. Should be just directed to the commission. If we have questions, we can, we can ask those. You're limited to three minutes. Um, and with that, I think Nancy will swear you in.
Do you swear a firm under the penalties of perjury that you will tell the truth in this proceeding before the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Yes.
Please state your name and address.
Yes, Pamela Bussard.
Yes, Pamela Bussard. And my family owns the property that Jason talked about that is north of their western section that they're expanding, where the, we talked about the fence, do you have a pointer? Oh, there is one. Which one's a pointer? Thanks.
That'd be the concrete plant, is that correct?
It's next to.
Next to the concrete plant, okay, thank you.
I can do it, anyway. Anyway, I can go point it, but you know where I'm talking about. He talked about the fence, that was the area that there was no fence. So I have talked with Jason and have been in discussions with him for a while, he's been very good. I was surprised there was no fence there since the entire facility is being fenced and screened. I just wanted to make sure that it's also going to be screened. I'm pretty sure from Union Avenue, you can also look down and see that property, so it'd be nice to have it screened. Also, I have tenants in there, reputable tenants. And now, obviously, I wasn't excited to hear that a trash company is expanding below there, but it is what it is, so would like the fence and screening. Another issue that I have, or just wanted to put on record, is the easement. So that's a private easement, and my family, who are pioneer families here in Inglewood and Littleton, they, like I said, we've had this property, this particular property over 50 years. And that easement was put in place because one of the properties, lower property is landlocked, and the Canfield's property was landlocked. And that's why that easement was put in there, it's kind of a one-way easement. So I have asked Waste Management to put on record how they would like to use that easement. I know they've talked about having it for emergency bases, there's a gate there. Now, I have an issue with that, and maybe some employees, but I just wanted to get something in writing on how they plan to use that easement. I do have to say, I was disappointed tonight, and this was not from Waste Management, but like I said, that is a private easement, and I was told, didn't matter anyway, you know, whoever used it as much as they could. I didn't have anything to do about, I couldn't do anything about it, which is not correct. But I was disappointed in hearing that, again, that did not come from Waste Management. All right, so that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Pamela. Any other public wish to speak on behalf of the project? Okay. So with that, staff or applicant, if there's any additional items that you'd like to, to add in, in context to either the easement or, honestly, yeah, the easement would be great to maybe have a little bit better understanding. And if you could maybe even go up there and point to the area that we're, we're talking about to make sure we, we do understand which property that is?
The pointer doesn't work very well, so. This is the property that Pam was referencing, right here. And this is the property line between the Canfield property and hers. And yes, we have discussed that with them and planned to put a fence similar to what I've showed in, in the pictures, the chain link with the screening. Don't know the exact height, this just came up, but we will commit to putting that in. And then as far as that easement, that easement goes right down this line. It actually, I think, ends right at the Canfield property. Our plan is to only use that for residential type trucks or cars that would come into that office facility. There may be an occasional delivery that comes in for that, that building, but we will not be utilizing that for our trash trucks, residential, commercial. We will not be utilizing that for our transfer trucks. I think I noted this earlier as well, that those, our main entrance will continue to be up here and go through the scale house. So that heavy traffic that I think she has referenced will not be coming down that easement. Does that help clarify that?
I believe so, yeah, maybe you have some questions.
And that's to access that single-family home that's sitting there on the, on the Canfield property? That's to access the single-family home that's sitting to the northwest of that property?
So this easement, and Pam, maybe I'm going to better describe it than me, I'm not as familiar. So this easement is access to these properties right here, so, but also to the west. But I don't know the details of the agreements on that easement. There is right about here, a Y off of it, and this is all industrial to the west. And that easement is utilized for some of that, entrance and exit. I don't know all the details of that.
But, but for your uses, it's that small gray box there, right? That's the house, the single-family house, right there.
Yes, that is the house, that's what we will be using for the construction trailer, and in the future, some employees will utilize that.
And is there no other vehicular access from your property other than using the easement?
There, there, there is, we could come down this way and, right now, that property is completely fenced off and isolated, so we would have to remove the fencing. But we haven't planned to do that as part of this project. We have planned to leave, there is a chain link fence around the house right here, and right here, and right here, and then there's obviously the line between Canfield's and her property, and there's a entrance right here. But we would, we could come back in all the way through the facility this way. Again, we would be used like, for a few employees, it's not many that would be coming in that. Limited traffic on our part on that easement.
Thank you, any other, any other questions? Great, thank you. All right, so unless there's any other, we can call for discussion after, to, to talk about the points of it, but unless there's any other items that we'd want from the applicants, we can ask staff for clarifications after this. So I would want to call for a motion to close the public hearing, unless there's any other questions that we'd want to ask of the applicant itself.
I'll make a motion to close the, the public meeting hearing.
One second.
I'll second.
Ms. Sweringer?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
Ms. Hubka?
Aye.
Mr. Adams?
Aye.
Ms. Austin?
Aye.
And Chair Hagerty? Thank you.
All right, so with that, we can, you know, discuss.
Sorry, Chair, we need a motion on the floor before you enter discussion.
Motion to you to make a human being break at this time, how's that?
Could we make a motion to have a 10-minute break, like go as, as quickly as possible? Do we have to actually motion for that, can we just, okay, go ahead. Thank you, everyone, yeah, 10-minute break, we will be back at 8:35, we'll call it 12 minutes. Thank you. Looks like everybody is back in that had wanted to be back in, so let's just go ahead and, and get moving. Okay, so with this, we would need a motion. Yes. Okay, we're good, all right. So we'll need a, a motion to, to approve the matter before us, and then we'll have our discussion, and then vote to approve or deny. So I'll need a motion to, for the, for this case. Need a motion to approve it in order to discuss.
So it's basically, because you're not approving it just for clarification, it's a motion to recommend approval to city council. And then if you have any conditions, and then if you have any conditions, you add your conditions at this time, and then, so just clarifying.
Motion to recommend approval to city council.
One second, please.
I'll second.
Good. So at this point, we can now have our internal discussions on some of the considerations that we will want to add. I think Brooke had noted, the one condition that, that they had is to update the little legal description for the minor subdivision to combine the properties. I think we've also noted that there needs to be a condition to provide a 10-foot opaque wood fence along the south property line with a 20-foot transparent debris fence, adding a six-foot fence on the property line to the north of the new expansion. Think we'll have to figure out a way of describing that in some way, shape, or form to make sure that that feature is, is improved. I had to note, too, that they need to finalize the drainage report with noted improvements to the water quality for the employee parking lot modification. And I believe those were the only major things that I had noted here. Are there other items that we would want to have as part of this consideration? Go ahead, Brenda.
Okay, I got some things to say about doing this. Doing this PUD is a benefit to Waste Management. Having them just go through, jump through the alternative hoops, of course, would be an inconvenience to Waste Management, and unfortunately, the city. I don't think it would be an inconvenience to our team if we had to come back and vote on, of course, vacating the property and going forward. Let me tell you what Waste Management, though, has been a big, has how, how they have inconvenienced this city. You know, a couple of years ago, we put out a bid for a single hauler.
Brenda, as much as I would love to hear all of this, I think we should have it concentrated on the, the proposal at hand.
Okay, well, the proposal does not meet Inglewood's needs, okay?
Okay.
It does not.
Okay.
And so I'm going to tell you that Waste Management is not an essential service. We have essential services by Republic Waste and Waste Connections because they service the alleys. I just want to remind everybody of that, that everybody, that a lot of citizens in our town had to mad scramble when Waste Management decided not to service alleys. And by that, I mean, some of them have to. For instance, we actually have a member.
Brenda, this is not part of this particular discussion, so let's just talk.
I'm not going to vote for it.
Okay, thank you, that's, that's great, and I.
You're not going to listen, you're not going to listen to all the ways that this does not meet our needs?
I'm happy to listen to how this particular development doesn't meet the needs of Inglewood, but I, I don't think it's applicable to discuss the hauling of waste that is regardless of.
It is, and I'll tell you why, the trees, okay, well, should I go on about that? We have a very vague landscape description, how's that?
I'm happy to discuss the landscaping that's provided.
But all this is part and partial about how the company does not, because he specifically said in here that, in the presentation, that they are, I have it in my notes here, that they are essential to, or, or meet Inglewood's needs. And yes, Inglewood's site will provide necessary services to the city of Ingle and surrounding area for years to come. You know, what would really serve Inglewood is if we rezoned it for housing and put a park there and put green space. This benefits Waste Management, okay? Now, I don't think that that's any different than, of course, the adjacent property who gets to share an easement now. Again, we are going to be, have a single hauler one day, and it will not be Waste Management because they do not service our needs. And when we approved this in 1990 something, whatever, 92, 93, at that time, Waste Management did service our needs, and they did pick up extra bags outside of the trash. and they did pick up extra bags outside of the trash, and that is probably one of the reasons why they were happy to approve it then. So that service level does enter into this conversation. Regardless of how convenient or inconvenient this is, service level does. We're into this. We have a vague landscape description. We have a $2.5 million bridge repair we got to do. And like I said, part of that, this is why I had to bring it up, when we got those bids, Republic said that they use Commerce City. Republican no time said that they used this facility over here, so I don't know who's telling the truth. But we got that twice from Republic. Like I said, I'm also not real confident that everybody that the public hearing knew that this was about waste management, and they probably just thought it was. I don't. I never got to see that public hearing announcement, so. Anyway, I probably have more to say, but I don't want to go outside the bounds then. I'll defer.
Thank you, Brendan. I'm sure you can jump back in after we have further discussions. I think regardless, the facility is is onsite right now and is open air. They can continue operating it in in that capacity, and there's probably a detriment to our community with that. They could go through the process that you were stating. I'm not sure if you're saying that you would like to have more control that going outside of this process, that we can request these other things. They can do it by right, basically, if they just use the industrial zoning. So I if this is the opportunity, if we want to add some things, landscaping requirements, I maybe going to the 8%, I think, would be the minimum that I'd like to see because it's at seven and a half percent right now, and the industrial requires eight, so let's try to figure that out. Are there other things that you would want to to see that we can make happen right now?
Well, I don't like being blackmailed by and being told that they're going to do this great big favor by putting by enclosing the facility and putting a fence around it. Any company should want to do that. There is a county law about waste leaking from the facility. There they could be fine. So it is in their best interest is also to put up this fence. And like I said, really, the alternative would be for them to just move out of out of Englewood. That would be better. So I'd like I don't like being blackmailed like this.
I just want to say, I mean, I think you have lots of opinions on individual companies or whatever. I think our job here today is to evaluate the proposal of proposed amendment to the PUD on its own merits. I think with the chair, I would agree that let's go for that 8%. I mean, that's of landscaping, and there's some opportunity maybe there to improve some of the periphery of the property. But let's I would just encourage to evaluate this proposal on its own merits, and yeah, that's all I have to add for right now. Michelle.
Thank you. I actually like this proposal. I don't think anybody wants to have a trash trash processing facility near them, but I also think that that's what's there, and that's what it's zoned for, and I think that you have done a pretty good job of trying to address the concerns of the neighbors with your fencing and things like that. So I think the the biggest thing for me, though, is that this will be an enclosed facility, and I think that that will be a huge benefit. I have in volunteer work with Salvation Army actually been out to the dump right over there out there by DIA, and you say there's no odor things. Oh, my goodness. And that's that's open air, so kudos to you for trying to address as much as possible any odor issues that might, you know, be generated, but at least contained. And that's, I think, the biggest thing is contain not only the odors, but also containing the trash as much as possible. So I actually think that this is that you've tried to meet all of the things that both Littleton and Englewood checked off for you, and I with the conditions that you mentioned at the beginning, calling about the fencing and the all of those other things, and I think the 8% landscaping as amendments to the whatever the first motion was would be appropriate. Thanks.
Thank you, Michelle. I did have one other thing to add. I I would like. I don't like the idea of having that house sort of bifurcated from the property and relying solely on an easement through another property. Don't love that. I don't know what influence we can have over over that or require maybe the the fencing within the property that's being assembled or 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 put together here, you know, to have access through the. Yeah, yeah. I mean, yeah, the easement exists, but, you know, to to keep that fence there would require it to continue to be used, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's a title issue, though, that we can't really do much about, so.
Other thoughts, discussion that are are wanted? Yeah, I think Hope, any thoughts from your side?
Yeah, I can go ahead and share. Thank you again for all the information put in tonight. I think I also feel pretty okay about this project moving forward. I appreciate the thoughtfulness, especially in response to the aftermath of the fire and some of the impacts that it has on the community and the environment, such as the the litter fence and the commitment to avoid hazardous waste, and then the enclosed infrastructure, I think will really benefit the community at large and is appreciated within the environmental concerns. So I think at this point, I feel pretty comfortable moving forward with it and do agree with the chair's comments around the 8% landscaping requirements and pushing for that.
Thank you, Hope. Michelle.
I just have one more comment. The reality of this type of facility is that whoever's going to use it, they're going to go to the cheapest place to dump their load, basically. And it depends on how much gas and things like that will take to get there. So I I, as many of you know, I work for a tree company, and we don't have this kind of waste necessarily, but that's what happens with waste. It goes to the cheapest place, whether it be Commerce City or here or what or wherever. So and that's no, you don't have any control of who comes in because it's basically a public facility. So just want to make that comment.
Go ahead, Brenda. Carl, yeah.
I didn't catch the 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 rework on on Union there on the bridge. Were they going to contribute anything for the resurfacing of the the Union Avenue there as because they're they're basically the ones that tearing it up?
And I'll I'll defer to to Booker. I mean, obviously, taxes are paid for for their usage, the the tipping fees and things like that. In addition, I I don't believe there is an additional funding source that they are providing. It brings up an interesting question on other PDs, other types of development type projects. We've asked for contributions to the Oxford Bridge. We've asked for contributions to other types of facilities. I mean, I don't. This is is a bit of a different situation, I think, in in this regard, but you know, there's further discussion there.
It's basically like the Oxford pedestrian bridge. The apartments that are going in all around there are contributing somewhat to that to that bridge because they're they're going to be the ones that using it. And obviously, the the trucks going in and out of the facility there are using Union Avenue, whether they go west or east, either one. And the the bridge rebuild there is that's going to be very expensive for for Englewood.
Yeah, Brenda.
Yeah, one more thing. It's not a public facility, per se. It's a private. It's it's their business, and they make a lot of business being centrally owned here. I mean, alternatives are Commerce City, which is costs a lot of gas to go all the way up there, or Gun Club Road. It's convenience for us, but it's a moneymaker for waste management. I would like to see us hold out from. I don't know. Can you donate some extra trees over on the Centennial for Centennial Park to keep the trash out of? That's a fishing pond, and there's a lot of wildlife there. And of course, but, you know, yeah, real grateful for the fence. Thank you for keeping the trash contained.
And Brett, honestly, I would love to see this not be an industrial location anymore, but I think that's a bigger conversation than we're having at this point in time. I mean, we have the an incredible waterway through here with potential for redevelopment. You know, in some day in the future, there's obviously development on the south. That's a, you know, in Littleton, that's multifamily. You know, if we wanted to have a full conversation about redoing a zoning map, I think that would be a conversation for another day that I, you know, maybe that is something that we can discuss, but.
Well, no, I don't mean to bring it up. I mean, no one's going to want to build around an industrial waste facility. You know, so I don't think that's really hurting it.
They've they've already built those units, I believe, if I had to guess, went in after this was already established as a Sure. It was industrial, though, the entire time. It's always been industrial in this area. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying. So there's an opportunity. Yes. Okay, any any further items for discussion? Go ahead.
The only thing I have against it is the the traffic on Union and the transfer trucks that drive through Englewood and down Bellevue. Those are those are kind of it's it's something that we can live with. But it's it's kind of inconvenient to have those trucks driving around, and a lot of them are going faster than the traffic. So you got a truck that's full of, I don't know how much they weigh, but they're they're going to be weighing quite a bit. They're going to be very heavy and hard to stop. So, but in other words, trash is is not something you want to have build up, and you need to get rid of it, and they're doing that. So.
Thanks, Carl. Okay. With that, I think we would like to amend the approval that we will vote on to include the conditions that the legal descriptions updated as Brooke had noted to combine properties, the 10-foot opaque wood fence along the south property line, the 20-foot debris fence, the six fence, six-foot fence along the new north property line west of the west of the proposed facility. The drainage report being updated with improvements to the water quality to the airport, to the parking area modification at the airport, and then updating the landscape requirements to meet the 8% requirement for industrial area. Is there anything else that I missed? Michelle?
No, I just because I think Nancy, are we basically recommending to city council to approve that? Is that?
We will then vote with these conditions. Yeah, so this would be what we would be voting on with these conditions.
Right with those conditions. Thank you.
So if I can just clarify with who made the motion, Mr. Martinez is Austin. Are we doing these as a friendly amendment? Do you accept those conditions to add as a friendly amendment rather than doing a whole new motion?
Yeah, the staff recommendations as well as the 8% landscaping.
Okay, thank you.
With that, I think we can. I think we're ready to vote.
Okay, Ms. Sweringer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
Ms. Hubka?
Nay.
Mr. Adams?
Aye.
Ms. Austin?
Aye.
And Chair Hagerty?
I am voting aye for a number of reasons, mostly, and I'm trying to pull up my notes here, of course, that's taking me just a moment. The application, as the staff has found, is consistent with the Englewood Forward Conference of Master Plan to have our work learn other environmental goals under the current zoning. A new transfer, new waste transfer facility wouldn't necessarily require a PUD, but we're kind of going through this process to have a little more control, be able to have some additional items included. I don't believe it has a negative impact. I think it's going to have a benefit over what's out there right now and that it's in conformance with our rules and regulations for for this area. So with that, I will vote aye.
Motion passes five, one.
Thank you. All right. And with that, I think we're going to close the public hearing. And now we can move on. I think we are to I think to staff's choice. Hold on, let me just. Oh, no, we're appointment. Thank you. We have a new appointment from Camille to a permanence member from a alternate. So do we have to vote on that? And it's just Camille, correct?
Only a motion, please.
Okay, a motion, please.
Move to appoint Camille, promote Camille from an alternate member to a regular member of the commission.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Ms. Sweringer?
Aye.
Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
Ms. Hubka?
Aye.
Mr. Adams?
Aye.
Ms. Austin?
Aye.
Chair Hagerty?
Aye.
Motion passes six, zero. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we have staff's choice. Anything else from staff?
I don't necessarily have anything new other than since the last time we've met, Code Next or the Revised UDC has gone into effect as of October 27th, so you may see some changes in the future on how we present or what we're presenting, or some of our code references or citations may be a little bit different than what you've seen now because some of the the layout has changed our code. So that's the biggest thing. The other thing I might I might remind the commission and staff and applicants talk into your microphones because if we turn to face each other, it's really hard for people in the audience to hear this versus it versus this, including myself. Sometimes I have to lean in to try to try to strain to hear things, so just make sure we're using our mics and not necessarily turning towards each other to talk because then it may be easier for us to hear you in the meeting video, but not at the meeting itself. So the only things I've got.
Thank you.
I don't have anything to add.
And then I would just add, remind the commission, based on your bylaws, you only meet one meeting in December. And so your next meeting will actually be on a Wednesday due to the New Year Day holiday, and so that is January 3rd. And we will have the findings of this case that will need approval, and I'm not sure if anything else will be coming forward, but we will be meeting on the 3rd.
Thank you, Nancy. Any other items? Attorney's Choice?
Nothing at this time. And there has been requests for some additional training from our office on certain matters. So if there's anything that any commissioners would like some guidance on from the city attorney's office, please correspond with Nancy and let us know.
Thank you. Well, we attempt to do that at the next meeting, and go ahead, Brenda.
I'm sorry, we didn't really hear you very clearly, me and Michelle. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I should have listened better to Brian and his direction on how to speak into the microphone. I didn't really have anything to to update the commission about. There has been requests for certain training from our office specifically on findings of fact, and so we'll be preparing to do that. The intention would be to have that at the January 3rd meeting. But if there's other trainings or or other information that you would like from the city attorney's office, please let me or Nancy know, and we can get that set up.
Thank you. All right. With that, we have commissioner's choice. Go down the line, Carl.
The Englewood History Group is trying to get the museum opened up across the hall out here in the lobby. I just wanted to express the interest in that to try to get the people aware that it's it's being worked on. It's got a long ways to go. But it's the city's given $50,000 for it, and they're trying to get another grant through county, I believe it is. But anyway, it's it's in the works and will maybe be open in a couple of months, probably. will maybe be open in a couple of months, probably. Nothing else.
Thanks, Carl.
Nothing for me. Thank you.
I do not have anything. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to compliment the the Community Development Department for the community engagement around Code Next. I got one of the cards in the mail a couple of weeks ago. I hope there's more of that planned. It was very informational, and I think that's just a great way to roll out the implementation. So great work.
Hope?
Nothing for me at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, and I don't have anything to do either. So with that, I think we can adjourn. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate all the information and look forward to seeing you again.